Good afternoon. I am Kimberly Melnick, School Board Chair and the Administrative Informal and Workshop Meeting of the Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at four o'clock on this 25th day of June 2024. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to please tally the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber is Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Callen, Ms. Kendrick, I said Ms. Anderson, and online we have Ms. Owens.
Okay, and for the record, Ms. Brown is walking in. All right. So please note, members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.bbschools.com/meetings/live, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47 and on Zoom. Thank you to those who have joined us here in person and online. All right, do any School Board members have anything to report for administrative matters? Okay, then we will move on. For the upcoming 2425 school year, Dr. Robertson wants to offer two options for meetings with School Board members. First, to continue the format from this year with one-to-one meetings for one hour, and this is for one School Board member or two to participate with Dr. Robertson, or one to two School Board meetings to participate in school visits each Friday. The School Board Clerk will prepare signup sheets for both options the month prior. Any thoughts for my colleagues on that? Either one-to-one in his office or walk in the halls of some of our magnificent schools every Friday? Dr. Robertson.
Both and. Both and.
That's a remarkable opportunity for us. Any other thoughts?
I had actually talked to Dr. Robertson about that, and I personally love both options as well, because on the days that I can go for school visits, that's a great opportunity. But I also think that having an opportunity to do a one-on-one, and in some circumstances, is also really helpful, because on the school visits, you're so excited to be at the school, you don't really have a chance to actually talk. So I think that it's important to have both options.
I agree with our co-chair. I've had the opportunity to go visit with Dr. Robertson to a few of our campuses, and it's been an incredible experience. And also because of his years of experience in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, he's always able to add other extra commentary to why things are a certain way. He's got years and years and years of seeing things from the beginning to the current and to the future, so it's been great.
Okay, excellent. Anybody else? All right, amen, Mr. Callen. Okay, so now we'll move on to Item B, which is our summer programming, and we'd like to welcome Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, School Board members, Dr. Robertson. This afternoon, I will provide you with a high-level update of the summer learning opportunities for our students. I'm happy to announce that we are continuing to provide robust learning opportunities that we have provided over the last several summers. We have opportunities for all of our students in Grade K through 12 to accelerate student learning and provide a strong start for the 2425 school year. As you may recall, we've received funds during the pandemic to support learning laws, and we appreciate your support allowing us to expand our pre-pandemic summer opportunities. Esser funds continue to support elementary and fine arts offerings over the 2024 summer, but these funds will sunset this fall and are expected to remain unavailable in the future, which may require a reduction in summer learning opportunities. Throughout this presentation, an asterisk has been used to denote opportunities that are funded through Esser. I will begin by sharing the summer opportunities, summer learning opportunities for elementary level students. As implemented last summer, all current rising kindergarten through fifth grade students who were enrolled in Virginia Beach City Public School during the 2324 school year have access to the Summer Learning Boost site. This website is currently available for students and families. It opened immediately following the last day of school. The Summer Learning Boost site contains numeracy and literacy lessons. Students can access it through Class Link. They log on and click the lessons they wish to complete, allowing them to reinforce skills and concepts from the previous school year, ensuring that they have additional opportunities for review to prepare them for the next grade level. These asynchronous lessons are aligned and engaging. In addition, parent videos are posted to explain the learning intentions and focus of each lesson to our families so they understand the purpose of the learning and can extend the learning in other ways. Later in this presentation, we've included a QR code to provide VBCPS families a quick and easy way to access directions to see the Summer Learning Boost site. We're very proud of this summer learning opportunity for all students. For summer learning camp, summer learning camps are being held at select sites, including 13 Title I elementary schools and 19 additional elementary schools, for a total of 32 schools. The same four-and-a-half-hour structure for summer learning camps will be used as we have in the last two summers. We will continue to focus learning through literacy and numeracy instruction, and we have enhanced inquiry through content integration and STEM. Partnerships with the community organizations such as the Virginia Beach Public Library will continue at Title I summer learning camps to continue to nurture the joy of learning. Schools who are not implementing summer learning camps are provided with funds to support summer learning programs and activities that are designed to serve the student populations at their schools. They're continuing to prepare and will provide these learning opportunities in July. In addition to the opportunities shared on the previous slides, we would like to highlight additional opportunities occurring in schools receiving Title I funds. Current fourth-grade students attending Title I schools will have the opportunity to attend STEM adventure camps where meaningful STEM exploration and summer learning will be facilitated. This camp will run for three hours daily immediately following summer learning camp in July, resulting in a full day of learning experiences. In collaboration with United Way of Southampton Roads, six Title I schools will offer learning camps for students in kindergarten through third grade. The purpose of this camp is to provide students with enrichment experiences that support literacy, numeracy, and science and STEM. This camp will run for three hours daily immediately following summer learning camp in July, also resulting in full-day learning experiences for those students. We have some exciting news. This summer, for the first time, we will be having Ready-Set Kindergarten. This opportunity will be piloted in three of our Title I schools. This program will run from August 12th through the 13th and is designed to offer students with little to no pre-K experience a soft start to kindergarten. As you can see, elementary students will have a powerful opportunity to continue to learn throughout the summer. The next few slides will include information about the secondary summer school learning opportunities. Some of these opportunities have started, and some began today. Repeat courses needed for promotion will be provided for middle school and high school students in a face-to-face format at the locations indicated on the slide based on clusters. There will be face-to-face sessions from today, June 25th, through Tuesday, July 30th for both middle and high school students. SOL Fast Track tutoring is an optional program to support middle and high school students who must meet the standards of learning verified credit diploma criteria. This program is designed for students who pass their classroom instruction and receive credit but did not earn a verified credit by not passing their corresponding SOL assessment. Fast Track is also available for financial literacy students who need to earn WISE Financial Literacy Certification. First-time courses will be offered through Virginia Beach Digital Campus, and the course sessions began June 18th and will run through Tuesday, August 6th. It's important to note that these courses are full-year courses and require a lengthier timeframe due to the new course content. To provide additional support and foster strong foundations of learning for next school year, step-up face-to-face offerings will be available to rising Grade 7 and 8 students who earned a D as a final grade during the 2324 school year in English or Math. It is also available for rising 6th grade students who earn an overall proficiency score of developing proficiency on certain fifth-grade report card standards. This began today. Additionally, boost opportunities will be offered again this year via Canvas for Math and Science. Boost opportunities are preparation courses in the area of Math and Science designed to build the skills necessary for success in the 2425 school year. Boosts are asynchronous with support from FEV tutors. Boosts are offered at no cost to families. There is no registration required for Boost, and a link is provided to students and families to access in Canvas. In addition to the opportunities on the previous slides, once again this summer, we will engage rising 7th and 8th graders at Bayside Middle School in Avid's Mission Possible. This is a science summer bridge program. Mission Possible engages students in hands-on science experiences to develop critical thinking and scientific problem-solving skills to make science fun. Students perform scientific investigations that incorporate biology, chemistry, physics, environmental science, and math. The bridge program will run from July 8th through the 31st, from 9:10 to 1:10. Also, we'll continue to provide StarTalk. This is funded by the National Security Agency. StarTalk Academies offer a four-week immersive language learning experience in Arabic, Chinese, or Russian for 150 middle school students in 7th and 8th grade. Admissions in the program is via lottery, and students do not need to have any prior study of these languages. The summer camp began today and will run until July 18th at Princess Anne Middle School, with additional enrichment opportunities available throughout the 2425 school year. Finally, middle and high school performing arts teachers have the opportunity to teach a performing arts summer camp at their schools this summer. Teachers will provide instruction focused on a wide variety of literature, theory, and performing arts techniques. 10-band, chorus, string, orchestra, and theater camps will be offered at eight sites across the division, including three high schools and five middle schools. Teachers providing instruction will share more information with students, including how to sign up for the available camps. As a reminder, most of our students with disabilities receive the majority of the special education services in the general education setting. Therefore, many will have the opportunity to participate in the general education summer programs offered by the school division, which were described throughout this presentation. Some students will receive extended school year or ESY services. Consideration of ESY services is part of the IEP team process. These services are the individualized extension of specific special education and related services that are provided beyond the typical school year. ESY services may be delivered through a variety of settings and methods. It is a continuum of services. The IEP team will determine the setting, method, based on the needs of the students. ESY dates are July 8th through August 1st. Elementary hours are 8:00 to 11:00, and secondary hours are 9:00 to 12:00. Some students with disabilities will receive classroom-based ESY services at school cluster sites. For the summer of 2024, there will be eight elementary school cluster sites and one high school cluster site, serving both middle and high. Students receiving services through CSEP will receive ESY services at one of the elementary school cluster sites or Renaissance Academy. As you can see, our robust summer learning offerings continue. We would like to close by ensuring that our families are aware that all students who are enrolled in VBCPS during the 2324 school year have access to opportunities provided on this screen. Families can visit VB Schools' summer school site for more information. The QR code on the screen links families to a video with directions to assist elementary students with accessing Class Link. Middle and high school students can access the Boost sites in Canvas through Class Link, and all students have access to FEV Tutor, which is also available through Class Link. Thank you for your attention, and at this time, I am here with colleagues to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Kendrick.
Thank you so very much. This is exciting. You know, normally kids are not looking forward to summer school, but this, this is excellent. I have a question, and I just want to give kudos for starting the new Ready-Set Kindergarten Camp at all Title I schools. I have two questions. What's the projected number of pre-K children that would potentially register for this? And also, what have we done to get the word out about it, especially for those who might be first-time parents or not registered in the school system yet? So what have we done to get the advertisement out about it? Thank you.
The class sizes will range, I think we'll offer it for about 10 to 15 students, and we have worked with media, and they have shared information. We have it posted on our website. At the schools where it is being offered, it's also been shared. It's going to be at three of our schools, not all of our schools. We're just piloting it at Point of View, Thalia, and Diamond Springs this year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I thought we also were working with Dr. Doddy and the local pediatricians on this information as well. So I wonder if they are getting it out for us, because they have been talking to parents about the importance of making sure their kids are ready for school when they're coming to school. So if we haven't done that yet, let's get it out to Dr. Doddy and Dr. Wolin and their teams.
All right, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. I'm very excited about all of the opportunities that we're providing. And I just have a couple of questions. One is that I'm on our division's homepage right now. Where can families find out about the Summer Learning Boost online for elementary students? And I believe second, okay, yeah, just the elementary students.
If you go to, if you search summer school, it should pop up, and it'll take you right to that link.
But these are online, online opportunities, correct?
Yes, so the elementary ones, if you, you can't access them from the VB School's webpage. That's just going to give you the directions. They have to go to Class Link. So that's why we created that video and the QR code, so families can watch that video, and it's going to give them directions, because the elementary students would need to log into Class Link. And then from Class Link, they will just click on Summer Learning Boost, and they will be able to access it. We wanted to make it easier, so we provided the QR code so that parents could get easy access to that, those directions. And it's a video, so it literally walks them through it and shows them.
Where is that video located?
If you use the QR code on the last slide of this, you can check it out.
Perfect.
Yes, and then, of course, there's a link on the website when you...
I just, I would, I would like to see this, you know, maybe on the front page instead of typing in summer school, because, you know, as a parent to younger children, summer school is something I kind of tend to think of for my older students, and so I probably wouldn't be searching that. So that's, I think, accessibility, maybe putting something there that these opportunities are available, and click here, scan here, you know, whatever, just a little bit more front-facing, somewhere where families can easily access it. So we're using that as much as possible. It'd be great. My other question is related to first-time courses for the high school courses, the Virginia Beach Digital Campus. I was just curious, is there a reason as a division we don't offer first-time courses in person for these students that may learn differently?
I'll take a stab at it. Several years ago, when we looked at the summer school costs and the availability of staff, and the split between, if you were repeating a course, you only needed to go for three and a half weeks. If you were taking a full course, it was the full seven weeks. We felt it was more important for those students who were trying to repeat a course to be face-to-face. Those ones to accelerate will probably be more able to get through a virtual class. And so it just kind of morphed into, if it's going to be a year course, a new course, it was virtual. And if it's a repeat course, it's face-to-face. I do know that, that every year we are challenged in trying to staff our summer school face-to-face sites. So that's something, if the board's willing, to see if we can look into expanding that. We can for next year, but with summer school already starting this year, that's a problem.
And I was only curious, so I actually have a son enrolled right now in our Virginia Beach Digital Campus, and he's taking a chemistry course, and he says, oh, this is really hard. I'm trying, I just don't understand. And so I understand that there's a fiscal piece of that, and, you know, we might hope maybe follow up in conversation. I'd be curious to see how successful those students are in those online courses, because I would... Thank you.
Yeah, so Digital Campus, at the end of every summer, we look at what's our success rate. Last summer, we were at 94% of our students had a passing score. So we, and we try really hard to support and work with those teachers who are teaching those classes. So for chemistry, for example, if that's what your son is taking, the teachers are really open to helping out the students. So please let your student know, or anybody's students who's taking Digital Campus classes, the teachers are there, even though it's mostly asynchronous online. The teachers are there and are expected to answer questions and support students who have questions. But we have had great success rate with our digital campus classes and the support our teachers give students as they move through them.
Thank you, and I appreciate that 94%. That provides me a lot of reassurance. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
On the three Title I schools that you chose for Ready-Set Kindergarten Camp, what criteria did you use for choosing those three schools? Was that, I mean, could you just give me a ballpark figure as to why you chose those three over other Title I schools?
I know that one of the factors that we looked at was pre-K. So that was one of the reasons that we used to select that. But the team met together, and we identified three locations that we felt would be the best knit fit for a pilot, and then our hope is to expand. So I would definitely be able to provide more information, but I think that that's really the reason.
So students that go to that Ready-Set Kindergarten Camp, do they have to be enrolled in that particular school, or could it be, you know, any kindergartner that's ready to go? Maybe they're supposed to be zoned for another school, but you've got an opening, would you accept somebody who's...
I believe we're targeting for the students who are enrolled in that school.
I see.
So we're doing it this year just to collect the data to determine...
Maybe you'd be able to expand it next year.
Yes, that's our hope.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Ms. Anderson, I'll offer, I see Mr. Freeman back there. There's another factor in selecting schools for available programming. That's their summer work projects. So I'm imagining that some of the schools were excluded because of significant summer projects occurring. Mr. Freeman, that'd be correct?
Yes, sir. That is. And with the amount of summer work that we've shared with you that goes on, it really, we've got a strong process that starts in about the December timeframe of this year to work through what work is going to be done and what sites are available to be able to accommodate the maximum programming, given that some sites are not going to be able to be used. So I think it's fair to say through that process, there's either a program or major work that's going on at every one of our schools that we have. If I'm incorrect about that, I will share that with you later, but it is a jigsaw puzzle that gets put together every year. Do you want to add anything? Thanks for that, Dr. Robertson.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Dr. Melanie Hamlin, Senior Executive Director for Elementary Schools. We have worked in partnership for this kindergarten preparatory opportunity for kids, and really, this program came as response to requests from teachers and principals. As you may or may not, you probably do realize, some of our students struggle as they get acclimated to kindergarten. And so we looked to three schools that have our Title I and for funding purposes, as well as for other reasons. But really, we want, the purpose of the program is to allow the kindergarten or the pre-kindergarten children to come into school, get to know their building, get to know where they're going to eat lunch, get to know, you know, the people that they're going to be surrounded with and that are going to love and to care for them, so that we can make sure that we're ready for them on the very first day of school, to meet their individual needs and to make this school year as successful as possible for all of our children. So that's why we're just trying it with three schools. We're going to see how it goes, and in hopes that we can move it forward. But really, the intent is to prepare ourselves so that we are ready to make the first day of school for those, our most needed children, the most successful it can be.
Well, I'm thrilled that you're doing this, and I hope we are able to expand it next year. Thank you.
Okay, as you know, one else, but I won't let you walk away without a thank you. We really... Oh, did you already speak? Oh, I won't let you walk away without a thank you to you and your team. VBCPS shines in this area, the summer school area, and you guys are so innovative in your thinking, and I know, I know, and I said, your team, it's really remarkable, and I thank you for all of this work, and clearly, our families thank you as well, so.
Thank you.
All right. And now for our equity update, and we welcome Mr. Ty Harris, Director of Office for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Welcome, Mr. Harris.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. I'm happy for this opportunity to provide an update on the Equity Plan Implementation and activities that our office are engaged in. Before I begin, though, I do want to recognize my teammates. We are a small office, but we're doing big things, or at least we're trying to. My Coordinator of Equity and Opportunity, Meredith Hopson, and our Administrative Assistant, Diana McAngers. Thank you all for your work. This evening, I will unveil our educational data dashboard, briefly touch on the various ways we are engaging students, staff, families, and the greater community, and share our immediate next steps to continue moving onward and upward. We are at the midway point for our Equity Plan Implementation, which was adopted unanimously by the Board in October of 2022. Upon review of that extensive plan, you may ask, how are we measuring success? Rather than walking you through all 81 of the action items, I'd like to discuss the high-yield strategies for each of the six goals. In the spirit of transparency, I believe it is prudent of stakeholders to ask and know, to what extent did we accomplish what we set out to accomplish? You may remember, during my mid-year update in December, the start of the school year, we took a close look at these high-yield strategies and decided to focus on the ones that we felt would have the biggest impact right now. We also considered the additional asks of our staff, such as planning for Literacy Act implementation, developing cultural competency modules, et cetera. Goal one is educational excellence, and I feel that all three strategies under this goal will be directly impacted by the cultural competency training that is currently taking place. I think we will see considerable gains after folks go through that training, which will then allow us to calibrate our efforts and target any areas where deficiencies still exist. Goal two is student well-being, and I feel that we are addressing our mentorship needs. New partnerships have been fostered to support that. And I think that at the high school level, we are on to something with the Tide Coalition and Amplifying Student Voice, which I will talk about later. We continue to explore how to best implement prevention and intervention strategies as alternatives to suspension. I've heard a few of you talk about your experiences and discipline hearings, and I know you see a pattern... and I know you see a pattern emerge as you review those files. How often is there a referral followed by another referral, then a suspension? This progressive path that if you could just intervene, we could maybe slow things down. We want to specifically target that time between a referral and a suspension. So I'm a teacher, I've referred the kid for something, and they got lunch detention. What happens now? We both may be feeling a certain way. If there is no opportunity for closure, understanding, forgiveness in some cases, depending on what happened, referral number two will be coming soon and likely as a result of ramped up behavior because that kid never got a chance to come down from the first incident. We're not going to let the kid disrupt instruction. So what happens then? Now, on the backend, that student gets suspended. What are we doing to repair that relationship and welcome them back and let them know that we care about you? We care about your success. We're not going to put up with your shenanigans, but we want you here. You've seen the discipline data, and I'm sure it doesn't shock you that there is disproportionality among who gets referred and suspended, meaning we need to do better. The cultural competency training will help in this area. Goal three is student ownership of learning, and I feel that we are making considerable progress here. Dr. Monica Robinson provided a summary of equal opportunity schools not long ago. Avid is going strong. These strategies are helping to meet this goal. I think bringing parents into the conversation a bit more will yield even better results. Goal four is exemplary diversified workforce. Led by our HR department, VBCPS has been doing a fantastic job of ensuring that these strategies are addressed, specifically talking about fostering a positive work environment. This is obviously an area in which we all play an important role. People, regardless of position or title, want to work in a place where they feel welcome and appreciated. Goal five is mutually supportive partnerships, and the Office of Family and Community Engagement have these strategies well taken care of. The next big task associated with these strategies is to get that information out to staff. It's one thing to have an extensive list of partners, but what's the point if you don't know how to access it and how to go about leveraging those services? Goal six is organizational effectiveness and efficiency. Quite honestly, this one sits at the heart of who we are because all other goals revolve around this one. How effective are the things we choose to do and how effectively are we doing them? In order to monitor progress towards meeting our goals and maximizing the instructional aspect of organizational effectiveness, we will be launching a data dashboard. Over the last ten months, we have worked with our contracted partner, Hanover Research, to develop a public-facing equity dashboard. Prior to this, we had data available in multiple places and presented in various ways. Having a single, clean, and accessible platform that any user could interact with supports our goal to be effective and efficient. The information in this dashboard was provided by us, and we will have full control of the dashboard at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This dashboard demonstrates the division's commitment to transparency and accountability. I'm a big believer that when you know better, you need to do better. My hope is that this tool will be used to make real and meaningful progress in areas where we are stagnant. I hope that we can collectively share our joy in areas of growth as well as have open and honest discussions about areas needing improvement. We plan to post the link to the public dashboard on the Division webpage in the About Us section. The dashboard will also be accessed from the DEI tab on vbschools.com. We have been working with Communications to ensure that the dashboard meets all accessibility standards, and we anticipate a public launch around August first. The information presented in the dashboard will be the prior year's data, and it will be updated annually. This year, we have been deeply immersed in developing our cultural competency learning modules. Six months ago, I shared with you the steps we have taken to ensure that this training not only meets the requirements of the VDOE but also bridges the themes and competencies that we have already adopted and put into use here in Virginia Beach. I will be providing an in-depth look at that training during the School Board Retreat. You are familiar with the programs that our office has supported over the past fifteen-plus years, Beach Girls Rock, African American Male Summit. What you may not understand, however, is that we are making significant improvements to those programs while also adding a plethora of unique opportunities to engage our stakeholders. A good friend of mine, who's a superintendent of a district in South Carolina, told me that if all DEI offices engage their communities the way that we do, there would be far less pushback when it comes to discourse around equity and inclusion. Beach Girls Rock is once again a big success. We have settled into a nice routine of holding our fall event in October at one of the high schools, more open to anyone and everyone, then having a more focused event in the spring at one of the universities. We've been at ODU the past two years, and we have plans to be at Norfolk State and/or Virginia Wesleyan soon. Both universities want us there, and ODU wants to bring us back, so it's a good problem to have. This year's spring event included sessions on cybersecurity, theater, game design, and space exploration with a team from the NASA Space Grant Consortium. In the sixteenth edition of the African American Male Summit, we congregated at Cox High School and introduced some new components to the event. There have always been leadership and career sessions, but we added an additional layer this year, which focused on social awareness and mental health. We know that there is a real stigma surrounding men and asking for help or being vulnerable. These stigmas around mental health in particular seem to exponentially impact communities of color. Therefore, letting these kids know that it's okay to not be okay or crying doesn't make you weak is a critical message to share with them, and we are doing that through the summit. We are also leaning heavily on Greek organizations at local universities. Fraternities and sororities are constantly looking for ways to engage with the community. And so the dual benefit of exposure to college and mentoring by young people fresh out of high school is one way is one we want to capitalize on. Planning for this year is already underway. Green Run is hosting, and we are going to make it the best yet. Now, it's possible, depending on which way you came in, if you attended any of the graduations this year, you may have noticed some really cool banners in front of the hotel directly across the street from the Convention Center. These unbelievable works of art were completed by VBCPS students as part of the Season for Nonviolence. For the second year, we hosted a poster and poetry contest, and this year added the banners that schools could submit.
That's amazing.
Other activities that we have gotten involved in, you may remember that we partnered with Public Utilities to host a water fair. Families love that, and the city wants to do that again. We had six schools participate in Diversity Dialogue Day at ODU. That is the most we've sent, and I'm working with them to possibly host a VB-only event this winter so that more students can participate. This is an ask that came directly from students who had attended. We are trying to support organizations that support us, and so we attended the Urban League of Hampton Roads event. They do a ton of mentoring and tutoring in our schools. We also support the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities, who consequently we are partnering with in addition to the United Jewish Federation of Tidewater, to host a summer educators' training in July. Participants attend the training on July twenty-fourth, and then they'll take a trip to the Virginia Holocaust Museum in Richmond on the twenty-fifth. Finally, our office continued to support the efforts of the Two Hundred Plus Men Foundation, a group that recognizes students of color who carry at least a three-point-oh GPA. We introduced the Making Waves Mentoring Program, where employees have an opportunity to mentor a student. We kicked that off mid-year, but anticipate hitting our full stride going into this year. And finally, Tide. You've heard about it. You'll continue to hear about it because it is what engagement is all about. And the people involved are on fire for the work that is being done. I have a video that I'd like to show. It's nine minutes long. I played with the idea of selecting a few clips and then thought, I get to talk to you lovely people twice a year. You want to know that the programs we invest our time, energy, and money in are having an impact? Well, this is ours. This is as homegrown as it gets. These are our students, our teachers, our administrators, central support staff, and our community coming together to address real challenges that exist in our schools. The inspiration for this was what I saw last year at Kentsville High School, where Principal Melissa George and student Zakari Scott revamped their Equity and Belonging Council. After one meeting, I knew we had to replicate this in every building. Our purpose is a focus on equity, social emotional development, mental health, and civic engagement, all for the purpose of improving sense of belonging. Our preliminary spring SEL survey survey data suggests that our hard work is paying off. I'll show the video and conclude with an opportunity for you to ask questions. Welcome to a journey of unity and understanding. Welcome to the Tide Program at Virginia Beach City Public Schools, where diversity, inclusion, and equity go together. At the heart of Virginia Beach, our schools are more than just a building. They are a vibrant community where every student is valued and understood.
Everyone wants to feel like they are accepted and valued for who they are. This is particularly important in our schools because we want them to have a solid sense of belonging so that they can do their best. We established the Tide Coalition in every high school to provide students with an opportunity to really dissect what is it within their buildings that they needed to address to improve sense of belonging for their peers.
Through Tide, we embrace a curriculum that reflects all cultures and perspectives, ensuring every student not only sees themselves in their lessons, but also learns about the wide world around them.
If we are thinking about creating communities in schools where students get to come and learn, grow, develop, practice, take risks, make mistakes, recover from mistakes, we just do not have the ability to build meaningful community in schools without the contributions and the voices of our students.
The Tide Coalition has provided us an opportunity to have direct contact with students on a regular basis, a diverse set of students with diverse backgrounds and experiences so that we're hearing from those who maybe didn't have a voice before and in a sort of more formal setting where we not only have staff, but we also have community stakeholders who are seeing a role in how they can make change and really a strong idea of servant leadership of how can we contribute to make the greater good happen. The Tide Coalition allows that to occur.
I think the thing that I've enjoyed the most about working with the Tide Group here at Kellam High School has been just the ability to put student voice on a pedestal and be able to work alongside students and validate their concerns. So often, students feel like they may not have an opportunity to to voice their concerns or feel like what they have to say is not important. So this this group really gives an option for them, an outlet for them, and we can have one-on-one or small group conversations about issues that are that are bothering them in the school and we're able to validate those concerns and then move those actions forward so that we can do something about them.
Virginia Beach City Public Schools Tide Program is more than just an initiative. It's a movement together. We're building a community that thrives on togetherness, diversity, inclusion, and equity.
I think it's just expanded the conversation. And so in these, I'm on the mental health task force in Salem, and there are adults in the room talking about things that are happening in the schools. But going out into the schools and including students in the conversation has been helped us better work toward meeting their needs because we have their input, their conversations, and we're sort of have many different perspectives than coming back, and it has made the conversations during these meetings much more powerful.
And just being able to teach the students that design method in order to plan and implement a project and actually carry it out. And just giving the students another way to feel connected to Tall Whit as well. I feel like Tide was successful in doing all of those things.
So with the mentality of Tide infiltrating all of the minds here at Landstown, we want to create a situation where people know that we care about each other. For me, it's more about students finding their people, if you will, finding their group and finding their vibe, finding their their groove. So once again, it's not just about coming here and getting twenty-two credits and getting a piece of paper and leaving, but making memories along the way.
So at Bayside High School, we've addressed belonging in a couple different ways. We are, we started small with our Instagram, and so we know that students love social media, and that's been a big push for us to really put some positivity out there and get our students engaged in really good dialogue about belonging here. We use Canva, and we have created lots of different posters and flyers to post in areas just for students to remember that they belong here. And we're currently working on our big kind of end-of-year project where we are going to create a student belonging mural that's going to be the voice of the students here in the building for a really long time. So we're very excited.
Our Tide Coalition this year had such a positive impact on our sense of belonging here at Cox High School. They identified one lunch as a time where students who might not feel as connected to the school could use some activities or a way to connect with other students. They chose ping pong because they thought that all students would be able to come play ping pong. Anybody can learn, anyone can play, and the ping pong club has grown exponentially.
So at Ocean Lakes, we created posters of microaggressions, which we displayed on a board during Founder's Week to spread awareness about how they could be hurtful to different types of people and different groups of people.
One of my favorite events that we went to was the ODU Diversity Dialogue. We had, they had me talking to everyone, and it was a great experience because I got to meet different people who were doing the same thing. And I also got to learn certain things and certain techniques to bring to the school that we can also bring. They had us talking about decorating our hallways with different things and bringing more color to the school and bringing more diversity for everyone at the school. And I just think Tide is one of those things that will bring just everyone together.
Personally, for me, Tide is something where you could just go and you do not, you're not judged. Your opinion is taken into account. And I noticed that I have an opportunity to say what I want to say about my school and that my opinion is taken into, which is honestly just a better environment overall for FC.
Here at Kentsville, we are a community together. Every day, the students see the staff and the staff sees the students. We all come with our own bearings, like our own news, our own stuff that we have to deal with every day. So it's important for us to make a community where we could all be happy, sad, like sad together, have our moments of joy with each other because we are going to see each other for a long period of our lives, for for you.
At a staff faculty meeting in front of all the teachers in the school, we as a coalition grouped up with a selected group of teachers from each department in the school and created a roundtable discussion on what they do in their classrooms to create a sense of belonging with students, discuss the student perspective, and share that with all of the teachers and faculty of our school.
Here at Salem, our Tide Coalition, we participated and created the United End Diversity Week that basically just brought a sense of belonging to get and togetherness here at Salem. I think the biggest thing with Tide Coalition is that I know that I'm making an impact not to just my school, but to Virginia Beach City Public Schools as a whole. And when I can make a difference, that's huge.
Important for students and staff to feel like they belong because if they don't feel like they belong, they're not going to want to come to school or they won't participate in school activities. And if they feel like they belong, then they'll want to do that and do more within the school. So I think that's why we should work better to make them feel like they belong.
Join us and be part of this change. Together, we rise with Tide. And that video was created predominantly by Ty Swartz's media class at Landstown High School with a lot of assistance from Mr. Ken Phillips at the Vog Tech Center. So with that, I'd love to. So with that, I'd love to answer any questions that you have.
Greg, thank you so very much for all that you are doing and your small but mighty team that you're doing for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I've heard so many wonderful things about you and the work that you're doing, and this is clearly seen. I have several questions along the line of the Goal Four, the exemplary diversified workforce. One, what are the target goals for a diversified staff? And two, where can I find the data for the diverse teachers and principals that we currently have? And also, what are we doing to ensure that we are not getting the diverse talent for our schools? And finally, what are we doing to retain the teachers and the principals for the schools? And the reason why this is important to me, because in my district, in the tri-campus, the elementary district, tri-campus and District Four, I'm learning that they're having a hard time keeping diverse teachers past the three years. After the three years, they're gone. And I know that the traction that they're gaining, it gets kind of lost. And if we're even able to keep them for five years, the impact that that would make. So I know I just gave a lot of questions there, but I will stop so that you could provide us with this information. Thank you.
I appreciate all your questions. I'm going to defer to Ms. Woodhouse, who has the answers.
Yes, and good afternoon, Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resources Officer. Our goal has not changed. In terms of our staffing, we have always wanted our staffing to mirror our student population. And so we, as a division, believe that every student should have the opportunity to learn from and interact with someone who looks like them, who has a similar culture, culture, and all. So that has not changed. So HR, we very closely monitor that data. And I just confirm, because although I look at it all the time, I don't think necessarily where it's always posted. It's actually posted in our navigational markers. So when you take a look, it will have the breakdown, whether it be ethnicity, gender, the breakdown of our staff at the elementary and as well as the secondary level. In terms of our, I call it sometimes our hardest staff, more challenging schools, which sometimes tends to be our Title I schools, it's a struggle. It's, it is a struggle. The benefits of working at a Title I school, which I'm hoping everyone is listening, one, you can definitely seek payoff of your college loans. The federal and state governments have set up opportunities for teachers who work in schools that meet a certain demographic set where they can have their school loans waived. And we do process quite a bit of those in our office. Secondly, at our Title I schools, they do have smaller class size. They have additional resources and supports over and beyond what some of our other schools may have. So they may have additional literacy coaches, math coaches, and supports. And many of our Title I schools, especially at the elementary level, may be staffed from an eighteen-to-one ratio versus what you would see in a traditional school. We do ask for a three-year commitment. That was identified by the state when it indicated a concern with the turnover of staff at our more challenging schools. But the reality of it is, they are more challenging. And so you have individuals who thrive in that environment. And then you have others who just want to work with a different set of students and want to have a different skill set. And so what's nice about Virginia Beach is we do have a diverse population and we can meet the needs. And you know, I'm going to put the plug in. This is why we continue to have the conversation around compensation. So when we talk about not just retention at our Title I schools and retention division-wide, compensation has become more of the conversation piece that determines whether or not employees stay where they are or whether they are seeking other opportunities. But because of the staffing at these schools, I think they do a lot to not just level on the children, but to also level on their staff. We have many who are committed and in love and stay in Title I schools. And we have others who say, I like to seek other opportunities. I think I may have hit all your questions. If not, please let me know.
Pretty impressive, Dr. Woodhouse. Thank you.
Yeah, I would add Ms. Woodhouse to your response that, because the other part was how do we recruit and retain. So you talked about retain. We also, Ms. Woodhouse and her team really cover from probably the middle of the country, top to bottom, recruiting at different schools. There are schools we've been super successful with attracting candidates that, you know, somewhere historically black colleges, universities, somewhere local colleges, universities. So we continue to attract those individuals. The challenge that every school division is having is a declining number of students at the collegiate level who are seeking to go in education. And so what we find with our minority candidates in particular, they have multiple choices that they can choose to go. And when you get multiple choices, it comes down to compensation and cost of living.
Thank you. Ms. May.
Thank you for that awesome video. That was great. And I took away two themes from that video, unity and belonging. And I love that. And I love that. I know unity is huge for you, and I'm so thankful that you pushed that. And specifically around students with special needs and students with mental illness. And you were talking about partner groups. Do you partner with NAMI, National Alliance of Mental Illness?
We are well-connected with NAMI.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, oh, you go ahead. You go first. Mr. Harris, thank you so much. This is an awesome presentation. I do just want to ask a tough question right now, though. So it it just saddens me because I I know all of the amazing work that has been done by you and your team. And I would say that the public probably has a perception right now that we might be having some issues with DEI right now. And so what is, what can we go out? I would, I would love a statement that you can provide from your office that would say, you know, yes, we have had a challenge this year, or some, some challenges this year. But let's also look at blah, 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 blah. I'd love to have a statement just that we can use. And I know that Nicole does a great job with providing information like that as well. But just from the DEI office and just saying, you know, we, we feel like, and if, I hope this is true, that we are making huge leaps and bounds and progress in, in these areas of, you know, training excellence, you know, you know, inclusion, whatever it could be. Because I think right now we really need a positive message and some additional verbiage that we can use when we're talking to our community members who might have a different perception. So.
So, Ms. Franklin, I appreciate that. We, we are taking a division approach. What I worry in putting too much on to the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is they become the single spokesperson for the work that we're trying to do. And so Mr. Harris and his team are heavily involved with each of the departments in various areas that are related to the, the equity work that we are, we are doing. You'll hear another presentation by Mr. Harris at the retreat. You'll see in the forecast in a moment, a presentation we're going to do with, with you on August thirteenth related to Policy Five Seven and how we're addressing some of those challenges. So we've taken the more holistic approach that it is all of our responsibilities to be the spokesperson for this work. And I do know that now that Nicole's feet are firmly on the ground, she's also looking at a number of different ways that we can tell our story as it comes across, not in a reactive manner, but more in a proactive manner.
Well, and I think that's so important because, again, we, we've just gone through all these different slides that show the amazing work that is being done in this division. And, you know, unfortunately, a few incidents always cause, you know, us to slide, you know, twenty steps backwards. But, but I, I do want to showcase much more heavily that we, you know, we are doing some really, really amazing positive work as well. So, so I just want to make sure that we continue to just make sure all that's well-known. So, thank you.
So as a proud member of the Equity Council, I just love that group so much. But I, I remember during graduation that one of the speakers, I don't remember what school, but mentioned TIDE Coalition in their speech. And it made me so proud just to, just to hear that spread and just that it was so important to that person. But if you could back up to, I think it was Goal Two. And I just wanted to, I think, we don't have, we only had half of the slides. We didn't get the backside of the slide. So numbers one, two, and three were missing from. I know, but some of us don't have room for the laptops, so we used the paper. So we didn't have that. So I wanted to make sure that I go back, Goal Two, Student Wellbeing. So you mentioned the comments that you get from the discipline hearings. And I will tell you, I often tell students, don't let this suspension define you. And then I speak kind of as a coach, like that principal sitting right there loves you. And that principal ha- has a short memory, just like on a football field or on a baseball field. You make a mistake, your coach yells out, "Short memory, move on." And I just love that you highlighted that, because I think that's really what our students need to know, that it's okay to make a mistake. And then to go back into a building and that everything's going to be okay. And they're not going to have this four-year, you know, frown, you know, looking at a particular kid and that that kid's going to come back and feel welcome. So I, I really, really thank you for that Goal Two specifically, because everybody makes mistakes and it's just okay. It's okay. So, thank you. Thank you for all of this work. Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we turn this over to Dr. Robertson for our Forecast to Regular School Board Meeting Agenda Topics for Hard to Believe Fiscal Year Twenty-Five, specifically talking tonight about our first quarter for July, August, and September.
Yes, so thank you, Madam Chair. This is a, a planning document that, that we successfully use, we being the school board administration, to foreshadow and plan for various presentations. And I say it's a planning document because there will be things that come up that need to go on this document, that aren't on this document now, but that's okay. And that's what agenda planning is all about. But if you're looking at the document on page one, you'll see our, our sessions that we are planning for the workshop on July ninth and July tenth. I'm not going to read those to you, because that, those doc, those workshop titles have already been shared. And they were developed by requests from the board. So those are, those are the sessions that we're doing on July nine and ten. If you go to page two, on July twenty-third, we have two workshops planned, an instructional technology update and a security update by School Division, the Office of Security Emergency Management. We also have policy review, community recommendations, and information on July twenty-third, which could then trigger additional items down the road. I know that one of the things that policy review is going to be looking at is weighted grades. And so if there's anything that's going to occur with weighted grades, I would imagine that on July twenty-third, that will be signaled to administration. Go to August thirteenth, and in the workshop, we have summer staffing update. We're going to give you an idea of where we are one week away from when teachers return in terms of vacancies. Ms. Woodhouse shared with me yesterday, we were at ninety-five vacancies for teachers, which is higher than we were a month ago. You'll also get the second presentation on new construction guidance and direction. Recall, we've, we've taken the board through a discussion around Williams Base on Six around Prince Anne High School. We'll talk to you more about that. And then at the retreat, there'll be a discussion. And then August thirteenth, we're going to be looking for some, some further direction as we hone into what's the next building. In that meeting, I will provide some draft goals to the board. And I'll be looking for your feedback on my goals for next year, because my team then will develop their goals based upon my goals, which will be aligned to our strategic plan. In information, you'll see an issue I talked about earlier, Policy Five Seven. How are we addressing some violations that have occurred recently in athletics and activities? We're going to give everybody an update there, so they're aware of any changes we've made leading into that time. Moving to August twenty-seventh, we'll give you a summer learning review, which will include, as Dr. Shubert shared earlier, how do our kids do? Vote both those in virtual and classes, as well as how many participated in booths, learning camps, et cetera. We are looking to do an expansion plan with Parent Square. We have heard parent from parents for years to say, well, I have a kid, I have four children, three in three different schools, and teachers want to communicate differently. Parent Square is a method we can use where it's, they need to learn one communication method with their schools. So it's, it's a method to, again, promote clear communication with parents. And then information, we have program evaluation schedule. We got the local plan for the gifted update, and again, policy review. Moving into September, September tenth, we have the employee input survey responses. Recall, we gave you the employee input data. Now we're going to tell you, as a result of that data, this is what we're doing. We'll introduce the budget calendar to you. And on September twenty-fourth, we'll have a pretty lengthy update on School Division Services, a school opening update, all of the projects that have been done, the completion rates, and all of those things related to where we are from School Division Services perspect, perspective. We will give you a, a look at our standards of learning, student performance results, some interim of financial statements and policy review committee recommendations. So again, this is a really good planning document for us, and things can be adjusted during agenda planning as, as board members find other topics that need to be added. Any questions?
Any questions? So a couple of things, as I've learned, and as you all have learned, the budget season never ends. And so you see that on the calendar for September. So be thinking about that. That thought process does not have to start in January. And the other thing is, I'm going to repeat this for the public, we still have ninety-five teacher vacancies. And I live in a neighborhood with a school. So every time I drive by Christopher Farms Elementary, I see the marquee that says, "We are hiring custodians and bus drivers." So anyone listening that thinks that they might want to be a bus driver or a custodian and like to join our team, please visit our website at bbschools.com, and you can fill out an application, and we would love to train you. And we'd love to get you on the road and in our schools. I'm sorry? Of course.
And, and Ms. Woodhouse, can you confirm? We just approved a pretty significant pay increase for bus drivers and custodians.
Yes, ma'am. For those on the U-seven experience pay scale, we have increased the entry rate to fifteen dollars an hour. That is two years ahead of the state requirement to increase the minimum wage. And also come August first, with the additional two cents raise, our employees, that's bus assistants, cafeteria assistants, and custodian ones will enter at fifteen dollars and thirty cents an hour. And that's a huge accomplishment for us as a division. It does put us ahead of our other local divisions. And it will also help for those who have been with us for a number of years, because when you increase the entry rate, it's a domino effect. So absolutely, Dr. Robertson and I had an opportunity to attend the Custodial Appreciation Day. And Dr. Robertson was kind enough to share the stage with me where I could share with our employees the great work of the school board and Dr. Robertson to support compensation for our lowest wage employees, and they applauded. And so, yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to.
No, I think that was great, thank you so much. Ms. Kendrick?
I also have another plug that I learned about, um, when visiting Betty F. Williams last week for the USDA. Um, they have culinary, uh, career opportunities, uh, no experience required, fifteen dollars an hour to start. In a few months, you can get college credit towards culinary degrees. A wonderful opportunity for those who wanna enter into the workforce, um, for the school system through culinary arts. Um, and I found that quite incredible, fifteen to twenty-eight dollars an hour to do that work. So wanna go ahead and plug that as well for anyone listening, thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Well, I'm not sure if this, if this should be something that I should bring out here. But I, I'd like to know, um, on September tenth, it says that we're gonna be talking about the budget calendar. And I just wondered if there have, if we have started negotiations yet with the city on our, about our revenue sharing formula? And if we have, when, when would you be giving an update to the School Board about those negotiations?
So nothing formally has occurred, we have, we've received no formal requests from the City Council yet or the City Manager to me, um, other than to say that we're gonna brief the Board in June and, or brief the City Council in June. And Crystal was at the meeting the other day, why don't y'all give her a moment, in a moment, a chance to share that. Uh, and it will be, I imagine, a discussion between the Council and the Board about the revenue sharing formula that expires in twenty-twenty-five. Ms. Bate?
Yeah, so, um, they briefed Council, um, very similar, and I'll share this again in retreat, um, on June eleventh. Council was open to revisiting the revenue sharing formula and simply from a standpoint of, uh, just understanding and taking a look at things and making sure that things are still intact and processes are still there. So again, like Dr. Robertson said, there's been no formal decision. They sent city budget staff back to do some homework, um, and to bring some information back to them. They want some comparisons from other school districts. They even talked about out of state, um, the budget director at that, at the city, a discuss that sometimes that's, makes it difficult to compare because Virginia has certain rules that other states do not. Um, and then subsequent to that, they will be reaching out to us to have, um, a meeting to have further discussions on whether, um, we can extend or keep what we have in place or whether we need to do any revisions from that point.
Okay, thank you.
And if, if I can share one final thought about compensation. You know, oftentimes we talk about compensation here and you guys should pat yourselves on the back. Because, um, this board, just like any board, could decide when additional revenues come in, not to put those towards compensation, and you have not done that. You didn't do it last year, you didn't do it this year, and the staff has recognized that. So I don't want anyone to, to misinterpret that, well, the board is just not giving staff raises. No, the board's doing everything they possibly can based upon the available revenues. And, uh, the actions that virtually every member of this board took last year to create that compensation package really has carried us through this year. Um, and this year, being able to get to an average of three and a half percent is, is been a game changer for us. And it's just a, it's an ongoing challenge at the state level. And, um, the city understands how important schools are, have a lot of confidence that we can work out a revenue sharing formula between the Board and Council that will be respectful of both groups.
Thank you. Mrs. Lanetti, do we have a closed session this evening? Okay, do we have time now? Okay. Madam Vice Chair, would you please read us into closed session?
I move the School Board recesses in a closed session in accordance with the exceptions to Open Meetings Law set forth in Code of Virginia, two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven, Part A, Paragraphs one, seven, and eight, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. Discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employ- employees of any public body, an evaluation of performance of departments or schools, of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation would necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or in which the public body or its legal counsel has no reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Namely to discuss, A, settlement authority for personal injury cases, B, retention of outside legal counsel, C, evaluation of an administrator and/or personal matters, D, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, E, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Okay, motion made, made by Ms. Franklin, second. Ms. Anderson, any discussion? All right, seeing none, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes to go into closed session, the motion did pass.
I'll just wait for the clear. I'll just wait for the clear.
Closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two dot two dash thirty-seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia be hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
All right, motion made by Ms. Brown, seconded by Ms. Riggs. Voting board's open.
Madam Chair, we have nine ayes, the certifi- certification of close did pass.
Okay, so um, just be mindful, it'll be crowded in here, we have a lot of recognition, including three full teams from high schools, so.